The order. I'd like to introduce everybody and welcome Patrick Ball to the group. He'll be replacing Cheryl Gilbert. And thank you for stepping in and taking on the responsibility.
You're welcome. Hello, everyone. How are you doing?
Welcome.
Welcome.
And have you checked out the minutes? Did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes? Evening. So Terry used some move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Larry seconds. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are all set.
Okay, start the referrals. Sorry, when I shut this down, I lost a few things, so it's just gonna take a couple of minutes to get. Okay, here's the agenda. So the first project will be 20056. Next, again, solar site A and B, Michael Schramm applicant. Okay. So the referring agency is the Town of Gat planning board. The referring agency is a planning board and the location is New York State Route 9H on the western side. It's across from, it's near Meadow Greens and the Columbia County Airport. You can see the tip of it here under the airport here. And this is the outline of the parcel. It's approval of a site plan and issuance of a special use permit to install a solar energy system. The existing zoning is RA1 and C1. The existing land use is vacant with some ag use on it. Surrounding land use, as I mentioned, is residential ag Columbia County Airport and Meadow Greens Golf Course. They are proposing the solar array in which will have 59,000 panels. Each panel is approximately 13 by 13. The parcel is 160.3 acres. And referred to as the Old Mill Solar, which will be a community solar project with two sites. Let's see. To the other. I really sorry about this, that when it shut down, I lost my tabs.
Have we seen this one before?
We have seen it, but we did not see the we did not see the site plan. It was referred to us before for the zoning ordinance amendment that was necessary in order for this application to come forward for site plan because it was partially zoned commercial and partially
Right.
so the rural residential.
It was like swap, is this one?
That, that, that zoning amendment was passed by the town board and it was a joint coordinated secret review between the pound board and the planning board, the planning board was lead agency and they issued an egg deck and the zoning amendment was passed. And we had submitted a number of comments.
Patrice?
Yes.
Before we get started, we've got a celebrity here wants to say hello to us.
As usual, it took me forever.
Cheryl joined us.
Hi Cheryl.
Hi Cheryl.
Hi. I'm stopping in just to say goodbye to everybody. It's been a pleasure to work with you and a privilege and thank you so much.
Well, I especially have enjoyed our time together. We've been together on the board for quite a while, not quite as long as Art was, but
It's been a long time.
It's been fun working with you. Hopefully next year you'll be out there singing again in the church.
That would be nice. Good to see.
Yeah.
Anyway, don't let me interrupt. It just took me this long to get in. I'm sorry.
Cheryl, thanks for stopping in.
Stopping in.
You're a nice diversion because I lost, I lost some data on my screen. Honestly, I bamboozled right now, so.
Happy holidays to you Cheryl.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you everybody.
You're well.
Nice working with everybody.
Happy with you.
Right.
Yeah.
Bye. Okay, so we got Rick joining.
We lost Rick now too.
Yeah, well, says he's here somewhere. Was Waldo? What you doing, Rick?
There he is. Hey, Rick.
Hey. How we doing?
Good. We're just getting started here with the referrals again.
Alright. Okay.
And I lost, I lost my screen, so I'm trying to get them back. So you didn't miss anything.
There we go.
Well, there was another one that's November dated November 20th. That's the one I was trying to find. This one is dated August 20th.
This one had a lot of information submitted with it.
It did, and that's why I, it was organized in a little bit differently and so we'll just have to go with this one. I'm trying to find the other one and I can't find it. Took me a while to get it all set up because they were the way they, it was organized. I apologize.
That's okay.
Here we go. Okay. So. Okay. So as I mentioned, the distance location of the solar arrays, there will be a proposed access off of 9H that will run through the arrays. Um. There will be a fence around the perimeter. You can see here. There's also a number of there will be a stormwater management plan. And they're also trying to maintain existing vegetation, but it does require some removal for the soils. There are highly productive ag soils present on the site. To that. As you can see, there are some prime farmland. This is the brownish color. The ochre color are farmland of statewide importance and the aqua color here is prime farmland if drained. So there would be locations of this arrays that will be on this area here in the, in the ag soils. Um, there's also wetlands present on site. Of course, they're not gonna show up, is it? This is, I am so, I'm so sorry. This is awful. It's gone. Well, I don't have that map either. I'm sorry. Um, there is a decommissioning plan that was proposed by the company, the developer. And there were letters of no impact from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Forest Preservation. As I mentioned before, the seeker was a type one action and it was a coordinated review. The parcel, as I mentioned, contains four wetlands and also New York State DEC regulated wetlands. And there are also parcels adjacent to this that are located in an ag district. She could see these gold parcels are located in Columbia County Certified Ag Districts. Um, the town has identified a number of benefits to this project that the, maybe a pilot agreement with the project where the town would have an increased revenue of $250,000 over 15 years. The community solar project would provide $40,000 in additional funding to the town for discretionary projects. They're also saying that it consisted with a comprehensive plan in the, because it promotes green development. And the town also received credits or benefit financially for 40% of the output of the project can be sold to the Town of Gat for electricity to be used in the municipal buildings or account credits. It also would allow residential subscribers in the town and surrounding areas comprising 60% of the project output and would qualify for a 10% discount. So the last time we saw this project for the zoning amendment, we made many comments and some were addressed and others were not, but they made the decision to change the zoning to allow this project. The town is in support of, the town board is in support of that change. Our staff recommendation is for approval. More comments though. First, the approval is contingent upon them being able to comply with all local, state, and federal regulations. Also noting that the project is continuous to parcels in an ag district and an ag data statement was required, which was submitted and prepared. So noting that. Also, second comment. Number 12 in the EAF lists that there's a possible airport related matter with the Columbia County Department of Public Works. There was a layer analysis that was associated with those concerns and that was included in the package. And they found that it would not present an issue with operations at the airport. Also noting that there would be nicer to tax relief as well as pilot for the town and cost savings in the town buildings. Also noting for stormwater pollution prevention that a stormwater pollution prevention plan would be required in permitting from New York State DEC. Also, there would be a work permit is necessary from the New York State Department of Transportation for the access off of New York State Route 9H. Also noting that there was a letter from the FAA, a letter of no impact was provided. Also for the presence of wetlands that permitting would be required from, potentially required from DEC and the Corps of Engineers. Also suggesting that the local fire chief review and noting that a decommissioning plan was prepared. So that is the staff recommendation. Is there any other, can I show you anything else on these drawings if I can find them? I'm happy to do so. Go back to anything you'd like to see.
I want to see all of them.
Okay. We can go through each folder.
Do you have like a road view wasn't or something?
The photo simulations?
Not so, no, just that, there you go.
This, these are details.
Right now, I thought there was one that showed a schematic even of what it's, maybe I was thinking of them. So they have, was there aerial thing of the look from the road?
This?
Yeah, did they have one where they're actually on the road looking at it? As far as telephone poles and things like that that would
I don't have the photo simulations on the drive that were included with the showing. So what you're talking about with all the vegetation?
They don't have, they don't have that?
I don't have those up on the drive.
Right, but they didn't have, do they show how the, how the connections can be made to the
To the poles?
Line outside, yeah, to the outside.
This.
Is the, is the property higher than the road or lower than the road? I'm looking at the contours and I can't figure out which way they go.
It is.
That side is higher, isn't it?
Higher.
It's higher, slightly higher, mostly
Much.
Mostly sort of, sort of level. It's not really, it's not much. Let's get the topo map back up here.
So the top, I mean, the topography doesn't really screen this. It needs the vegetation.
Correct. And it will remove, they will be removing vegetation, obviously to put the array in. There's a lot of low areas. You see, these are all these dark areas or all stream wetland areas. So. It is. So all of this all of this hatch area, all these areas in here are streams with associated wetland areas.
Okay. So. So Pat, just to explain to you, there's, there's options, few options that the board has on projects. We have approval, disapproval, modification. Those are basically, those decisions are made from, well, they're made, they're made in accordance with the, with the guidelines that are laid down for the, for the county planning boards. I think Patrice emailed that to you with just like certain standards. And then the other thing that you'll see, I'm sure some of the other projects will fall into this is, is a local decision where we feel that there's no countywide impact. And quite often when we see those, we'll offer suggestions. The suggestion to offer more like, as if we see it as an extra set of eyes or or the, or the staff has picked up some technical thing or something like that, we feel is, is important enough to add to the, the comments, but
Okay, yeah.
As we said, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just to ask a question, do we know, does the applicant own the property or are they leasing it?
The applicant, Michael Schramm owns the property. Next sample will be the installers.
So is, the only reason I ask, I sat through a, a training on solar farms. And one of the, the big points that they drove in was if the, if the owner of the solar field isn't the installer in it, they're on a leased land that they encourage the, the owner or someone to maintain a bond for decommissioning because they said they've seen a lot of people just, they lease the land and they get the viable life out of the solar farm, then they just walk away and leave the landowner with the the problem of getting rid of all the old solar equipment stuff, so. I don't know if anybody's heard anything about that or not, but it's one of the things that I experienced earlier in the year, so.
I attended that same program and the, their recommendation was that the municipality should deal with the landowner as far as the decommissioning plan and not the leasing of the land.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, because for a long time, it's been similar to the cell towers. Communities always got involved and said, well, we'll, we'll have the bond posted to protect our, our community. Well, you were kind of holding, holding the applicant hostage because technically you didn't really have an enforcement, an enforcement ability, if I don't even know if that's a word, but let's go with it. But, yeah, so I think, do we know where the, we don't know anything about the decommissioning plan, just that there's one. Patrice?
There is one. I'll pull it up right now. I'll get to that section.
So it looks like the company that's doing it is doing the decommissioning, not the landowner.
They're proposing a performance bond of $30,000, $30,000 per reg watt as with escalator. So for a total of 399,000. Let's see, there's the system, nicer to system. Let's get to the other part. There's another document I'm trying to find. It's the escrow. I'm not even, the letter that I'm looking for, and I haven't committed it to memory. So I can show you this. I think if we include it as a comment, if I find the letter before I send the letter out, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I think that's worth voting. It's a good point, Patrick. Is there any other questions or comments?
Nope.
If not, we'll entertain a motion. This is where the group really moves really fast, Patrick. You'll, you'll, you'll have tough time trying to keep up with them sometimes. They get going so fast.
I'll make a motion. We accept staff's recommendation.
Thanks, Ed. Oh, hooky, there you are. Hooky seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion's carried, project's approved.
Okay, maybe this one will go a little bit more smoothly, but. Okay, the next application referral is 20057V. Town of New Lebanon Planning Board. The applicant is Andrew Schramm. Location is 906 State Route 20. Anyone is familiar with where the shed man used to be? This site here previously, it's currently owned by the previous owner of the shed man, but this is the site where this applicant is proposing to establish a landscaping company. It's approval of a site plan and issuance of a special use permit within 500 feet of Route 20. This is Route 20. The existing zoning is CR2. Land use is commercial. Surrounding land use is residential and commercial. This, their existing structures on site. As you can see in the aerial, the, obviously the little sheds wouldn't be there, but there are other structures that are not As you can see in the aerial, the, obviously the little sheds wouldn't be there, but there are other structures that are not temporary structures. The parcel is approximately two acres in size. And the special use permit is required to establish a landscape company, including storage and sale of landscape bulk materials, including mulch, soil, and gravel. They've categorized this use as professional trades operation with accessory retail and bulk storage. The. A proposed use for the existing structures would include storage of landscaping equipment, trucks, trailers, mowers, and excavation equipment. And when, when they're not in use, and then also a business office. So here's the one structure for the equipment storage. The second structure here. And then this area for proposed truck trailer parking. The sale of materials are intended, are expected to be remote with deliveries being made by the company. These areas over here are the proposed bulk containers or bins where they would store the mulch and the soil and the gravel. The employees would load the equipment. And work offs, you know, below the equipment in the mornings and then leave to work offsite on the jobs and at the end of the day, return to unload. The hours of operation Monday through Saturday, seven thirty AM to six PM. The existing access is off of Route twenty here. There are two drives, and on the one hand drawn. Site plan, they're showing. Arrows saying. The circulation would be in this direction, what, looking like one way and one way out. This plan does not necessarily reflect that, it doesn't have a note, if that's the intention. They're also proposing parking area for employees and the, would be here, like the parking for the trailers and trucks over in this area. The existing lighting would remain, there's a proposed freestanding sign. They're also proposing landscaping and screening in these areas, dark green areas here on the sides. Is there existing onlot well and septic system? And there's an existing buffer that was for the previous use as well, and they're proposing to maintain this buffer and existing tree line in this area. There's also. On the rear of the parcel. The federal wetlands are this sort of cornflower blue, and this are the New York State DEC regulated freshwater wetlands here on the aqua. The site plan approval was granted to the shed man for operation. In twenty eighteen for the previous use, and they made a determination that would have to be another site plan because it was a different type of use. We find that there was a countywide impact from this, couple of comments, the DOT suggested that they contact DOT, see if there's any changes that are necessary. There is no curb, curbing here, there are two, and access drives off of twenty, and it's just flat. Without curved or controlled entranceway. And the second comment would, should be removed, disregard that comment, please. So, it's just the one comment with pertaining to DOT and the access off of twenty. Sorry, the second, the third comment, which would be number three, but actually number two, pertaining to the, the well and the septic system. Contact Department of Health, Columbia County Department of Health, for any necessary review and approvals for those. So, two comments, access and health department.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Make a motion.
Larry so moves for local decision, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Terry seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The town of Kinderhook Planning Board, the applicant at Coney Island Auto PC Play Development LLC, Paul Calcagno. The location is three four zero five US Route nine. I can, this is a little, just a, a street view. Of this is the area here, this vacant parcel, undeveloped parcel. It's on Route nine in the town of Kinderhook. This business to the north, directly to the north is Mavis, and to the south is the Saint Joseph's Spiritual Life Center. Requested action is an auto detail and sales use, approval of a site plan within five hundred feet of a state highway. The existing zoning is B one MFO. The existing land use is vacant, undeveloped, surrounding commercial, residential, and Saint Joseph's. Proposed structure is five thousand square feet and the parcel is approximately two acres. Site plan review required to construct the building and establish an auto detail and sales use Coney Island Auto. As I mentioned, is located between Mavis and Saint Joseph's, the proposed structure would be a Morton Building. So, the proposed structure here would be a prefab Morton Building, approximately five thousand square feet. Supposing access via a shared driveway that is with the. Mavis use that is directly north. There's existing access, curved access off of nine, and it would connect in here, the access drive. The, there would be a canopy roof area for displaying vehicles. Under the ledge as well as this area in the front for car display and the car sales area. There was an interior showroom proposed, as well as a repair facility. There would be overhead doors where the cars would drive into the repair area. Sales thought would be capital for approximately fifty-six cars. There were parking, five parking spaces for customers and five for employees on the north side. An employee to the rear. It's proposed, well, this location and the septic system is on the southern side of the structure. Stormwater drainage proposed to incorporate drywells, there would be lighting, but none proposed for the front of the structure. There's also a proposed sign along the roadway. Some screening along the south side and the rear of the parcel. And there's also proposed dumpster located right here. And, and also an ag data statement is required because it is adjacent. Two parcels that are located within an ag district, so these gold parcels again are ag district parcels. We did not find that there was any countywide impact from this, couple of comments, but I'll first, I'll get back to the elevations.
Just the guy that owns all the Kinderhook here, the bagels and all that stuff?
Yeah, that's his, his son runs a place in Kinderhook. Right, right, Patrick?
I don't know this guy personally.
Okay, so this is the, these are the elevations of the structure, this would be the front that faces the highway. This is the side, or the northern side facing Mavis and the south side.
Okay.
Okay, so, as I mentioned, we didn't find any countywide impact from this, couple of comments. First pertaining to the well and septic, or the contact Department of Health for any necessary review and approvals. Also noting that the soils are, that. There are prime farmland soils on the site, so we'd like to note that the proposed development on the parcel, that these soils are present, and that would result in the loss. Of the prime farmland soils. And also, it mentioned before that ag data statement is required. So it to New York State Department of Ag and Markets law, three oh five A, this is within five hundred feet of parcels within certified ag district, which may have actively farmed land.
Patrice, do we know if there was a swift done on this? It looks like it's more than an acre of development and a tremendous amount of impervious surface there.
Let me get to the coverage here. I do not know that there was. We get to.
Again, disturbance looks like.
We could just add the comment that they should look into that.
Yeah.
Then do they show anything as far as the traffic flow and with DOT, has DOT been asked to look at this again? The road cut?
Add that as a comment as well.
Anybody else got any questions or comments?
I just want to say that this is my town board, so I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
You, you, you don't have to recuse yourself because you, the planning board will be the ones voting on this.
Okay.
But if you're not comfortable.
We're just gonna make recommendations, is that the reasoning?
Well, no, I mean, your, your, your town board's not going to see this, you as a town board are not going to view this. But you're not going to vote on it, usually if you, if we had, if you were a planning board member sitting on the board, you'd recuse yourself. Like Larry will, will do, and Terry will at times, and Ed too, from the, the town of Greenport. Projects that, that you, that you will be voting on later. And Hooky, sometimes he'll, he will, he's on the Clavrec Town Board, there, there's certain projects in Clavrec that, that understandably, he's, I mean, if you're not comfortable, I don't, I don't want to. Talk you into anything, but it's up to you.
Well, I'm going to be voting on this because I'm, I'm on the planning board.
Oh, you are on the planning, I thought, okay, well, that's good, good thing you spoke up and said something. Sorry, I thought everybody was aware, I didn't know.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
But that still didn't get us a motion from anybody yet.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, okay, so move Rick seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And we have one abstention, Patrick. Sorry for the confusion there.
No problem. So now that means it's got to go to the town, that down?
No.
It's going to go to.
Just to the planning board.
Just to this planning board?
No, it's going to go back to the, to the town, Kinderhook Planning Board, that's where Patrick will see it again.
Oh, okay.
That was my, my mistake.
So then Patrick would decide in, in his group.
Yep.
Okay, just to the last referral, twenty zero five nine, Town of Stuyvesant Planning Board. The applicant at Heel Motors, Paul Calcagno, same person that was the, the previous referral.
This guy's in everything.
This is the existing structure, it is located also on Route nine, two one seven eight, Route nine, it's across from. Wool Rock, if you're familiar with that, and the town of Stuyvesant, the large farm.
Okay.
You can see those large barns here. Proposed action is establishing an auto sales and purchasing office, it's approval of a site plan, then five hundred feet of Route nine. The existing zoning is a hamlet extension, the existing land use is ag and residential, surrounding is ag and residential. The parcel is approximately three acres in size. Site plan review is required to establish the business office to conduct a purchase and sale of autos under the name of Heel Motors LLC. The property is being leased from the owner Leslie Dumont. It would be one of four tenants in the existing structure. This is an aerial view of it. See, there are four units, and this is where Heel Motors would be located in this. Unit number three. We're not proposing any changes to the existing structure, as I mentioned, there's existing access off of Route nine. According to the lease agreement, this use would have ten parking spaces available. They're showing three spaces right out in front where they would be displaying vehicles. And a maximum of three cars would be displayed at any one time in front of the structure. The customers are by appointment only, and there's the existing sign out front right here, which you can see right there again. It's a little, little roof on it. And they're not proposing, as I mentioned, any alterations to the structure. So, we didn't find any countywide impact from this, have a couple of comments that, suggesting that the applicant provide information on the location of the remaining spaces, because the lease agreement. Notes that there are ten spaces for this business. Also, the applicant found any information, a proposed signage would be located here on the building. And also that an active data statement is required because it is within five hundred feet of. Parcels that are located within the Columbia County Ag District, you see these gold parcels again, abiding and across the road. So, those three comments, no significant countywide impact. Anyone have any questions? Yeah, I added a third one, it didn't come out in the, I added it after I printed them and put them on the, on the. On the drive for you guys.
Okay.
Three comments.
The only question.
Signing, ag data statement.
Why would this need an approval of a site plan? It's not really changing. Getting a new tenant, but that's the only difference.
It's the requirement of their zoning that this. It's the requirement of their zoning that this.
When a new tenant comes in, they have to get an approved site plan.
Patrice, could that be connected to the proposed use of the car sales and the display why they needed it?
Yes, I would, yes.
I think that maybe we want to comment also that the town or the town planning board may want to limit the number of cars that would be displayed there in their decision. We've seen many of these where they get five cars and they've got 15 by the end of the week.
I mean, he does say it's only three. That was, and I read something in his statements.
Yes, he's got, the lease, the lease reads 10. That's why the comment that I had about the parking. These other, those other seven spaces will be for whatever vehicles, so. Add that additional comment to sort of bring that to the, to the forefront.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Aye.
I'll second it.
Were you with comments? Pat, was that you?
Who was the motion?
Who seconded?
Hooky.
Hooky, thank you. Hooky seconded. All, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion's carried.
Again, my apologies for the confusion. I I usually use a different computer and we, we, we changed the equipment and I took full responsibility for that. I apologize.
No need to.
I think Rick, Rick Martino there, he's got the same saying that I do probably. You can't make a lot of money every day. You can't be successful at the computer stuff every day, Patrice. Your percentage is pretty darn good. You got it. You got the handle on it.
Well, thanks for understanding. I appreciate it.
You're a lot better than me doing it.
We know you're a lot better than me.
Yeah.
Something to say for being able to spread those drawings on the table and, you know, gather around and looking at it and.
I've been reading Tim's book. Tim's got a book out.
Yeah, so the other item of business we need to conduct tonight is the election of officer to go into 2021. No.
I make a motion, they stay the same.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor of keeping the slate?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Larry, Larry, you're, you're, you're gonna be vice president again. See that? I'm president.
It was Hooky and Ed, correct?
Hope the pay goes up.
I'm going on vacation next week on this pay.
Patrick was going away, but he, he had the same problem, I think. He found out he wouldn't be, wouldn't get paid as much either, so he's staying home too.
Hey, guys, I'd like to thank everybody who worked, let me work with you and it's been a pleasure.
Hey, Hooky, I.
Hooky, we're gonna miss you.
It's been our pleasure, Hook.
And I don't know if you noticed or not, but when I go to the county waste department there to dump off my construction debris, when I mention your name, I get a better spot at the pile. That's incredible. You have there still.
Yeah, I got so much pull. I had a two and a half inch roofing now on my front tire a couple of weeks ago. I go to Copec now.
You're jumping on us, huh?
I do miss going to Helsinki after this.
Yeah.
But you didn't, you didn't hear the, the chairman made a decision that you're still gonna have to foot the bill for us.
You'd want to give us a Christmas party, wouldn't you?
I could have a Christmas party if you want one. Yeah, we could do that.
Usually Steve has the cannolis for us. I'm gonna miss that this year.
The eggnog.
Eggnog, yeah.
Yeah. Next year, next year.
I don't know if you guys saw on the, I don't know if you guys saw on the paper, but just the, the day after our last meeting, Art Coeick had passed away just before our last meeting. And so I'd just like to, 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 just remember, it's like to close the meeting tonight and.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, he passed away. They didn't put the obituary in until after services were held and everything.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've worked with Art for many, many years, as Patrice did, and I would certainly make a motion that we close the meeting in Art's honor.
Yeah, he loved this time of year, having the family near him and that. So.
Great guy.
Yep.
Great guy.
One of a million.
Dream it, I'll tell you.
Yep. So with that said, we'll close the, the county planning board meeting for 2020. Hopefully 2021's gonna be a better year. Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Thank you and same to you.
New year.
Happy holidays.
Stay safe, guys.
Yep, you safe. Thank you all.
Good job, Patrice.